It being a little after seven P M. Let's open the Kingston zoning board of appeals for June fourth, two thousand and twenty five. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Only thing on the agenda tonight is, what did we call it? Forty eight Marion Drive. Do we want to read it?
Yeah.
Even though we don't have to open it?
Public hearing will be held at town hall. Applicant Mary O'Donnell, Jack Walsh, forty eight Marion Drive, map seventy four, lot eight. Lot of other maps and lots. Seeks a special permit for construction of seventy thousand square foot transfer station, sorting facility and rail transfer station for waste and recyclables. Permit being requested under the language of Kingston zoning by law, section four point one A. This has already been opened and for the record, I did catch up on the video.
Excellent. Dave, I want to grab you really quick because this is a special permit and I think we were actually voting on denial. And this is coming through differently than it was before, so just making sure I'm following this correctly. I'm making sure we're following this correctly, the way he read it, because I thought we were upholding-
Yeah, the permit was being requested, but he denied it.
No, I think it was different than that. That's why I wanted you to explain it.
Okay, so, per follow up from our meeting two weeks ago, the purpose for tonight's meeting, as I understand it, is under the current zoning bylaws, a transfer station does not fit within the use categories under section five. It's not an actual defined zoning use in Kingston. Under section four, any, four point one point A, any, any structures or usage that's not explicitly defined in the bylaws is prohibited under the bylaw. So tonight, the board's duty, as will be presented by legal counsel for the developer, is to confirm or deny whether or not the definition of a waste transfer station will meet the definition of a public utility building, as I understand, the developer is now approaching this. So I denied based on the current zoning bylaws. They are seeking relief from that definition by use of public utilities, building or yard.
Correct. I'm just making sure there's a procedural, because basically they're coming in front of you because they're denied. They were not, they were just seeking a change of use, correct?
I'm sorry, Paul.
Were they, sorry, were they seeking a change, they were seeking a change of use. So I'm just trying to make sure everybody's up to speed, because I know it says special permit in there, but I think the second after the, after if we uphold or deny your-
Correct. As I understand the procedures from the zoning standpoint, because they don't have a def, because it doesn't meet the definitions currently under the bylaw usage, and I myself, there's no defined definition in the bylaws that allows me to interpret the use as a public utility building, I denied it under this, under that, under that guideline. The next step, should this be approved, would be then they would allow, be allowed to go in front of the planning board as part of the-
You mean if denied?
It would be, yes, because under the usage, a public utility building requires a special permit from the planning board. So in order to get to the next step.
Right. All right, so the special permit's not for us, the special permit's for the planning board.
Correct. This, this would be just a-
I'm just trying to make sure, if we add different special permits is why. I'm just doing it for minutes.
As far as I'm, as far as I understand it, there should be no consideration for a special permit. This is just to accept or deny the definition of a public utility building for the transfer station. If it's denied, then it's the developer's decision what they want to do to proceed. If it's approved, they would then be allowed to go in front of the planning board and present the project that direction.
All right. Thank you.
Very good.
So wait, what you're saying is that the permit doesn't come from us, it comes from the planning board?
That's what he's saying.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, 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 so, but I think the problem is when we read our special permit in here, we're not, they're not in front of us for a special permit. They're in front of us for either-
The definition.
Approval or denial-
Okay.
Of our enforcer. Advocate, or whoever wants to represent, do we have anything new?
Just give me one second. Get up to the-
You can hop it on. Yeah, tap it. Should go green.
Oh, there it is. Okay. Sorry about that. Good evening, members of the board. My name is attorney Robert Galvin. I represent Jack Walsh and Kingston Environmental LLC. And just to make it really simple why we're here, Mr. Walsh and Kingston Environmental LLC went to the building department and asked whether it be permissible to put what is functionally a transfer station in on a portion of the O'Donnell property located at twenty eight Marion Drive, and the building commissioner did not believe it was a permitted use under the bylaw and gave a denial letter. And then what we did is, under your bylaw, if we take issue with the building commissioner's decision, we appeal that to the zoning board of appeals. I think the confusion about the special permit was because at the bottom of the letter, it mentioned we were looking for a special permit. We are not looking for a special permit tonight. All we're looking to do is have you consider whether the building commissioner's decision was correct or incorrect, and that's the only issue. If we're right and you agree with us, then we would go through a whole, brand new permitting process with the planning board, because no matter which provision we think that this is permissible under, they both would result in an application, in a filing with the planning board, special permit process, public hearings over an extended period of time, and then a decision either approving or denying, or approving with conditions. So that's, that's kind of, hopefully that clarifies everything that is really going on.
Right.
So what Kingston Environmental, and you may recall from the prior meeting, my associate, David Henning, was here before, is going to lease, potentially purchase, portion, portion of the O'Donnell property at the end of the MBTA tracks. The, the, I call them the MBTA tracks, they're not technically owned by the MBTA. I heard there was a question about whether we have a right to connect into the tracks. I have a letter in the file that I'd be happy to leave with your secretary, which explains that anyone that has property budding the tracks, if they have a permissible use, is allowed to use the tracks. Okay? So hopefully that ends that question. I don't think it's necessarily relevant to the, to the matters that you're considering tonight, but I know it came up before and I wanted to make sure that we answered that question for you directly and right off the bat.
Yeah, I was just more questioning the fact that if we're just spinning our wheels and we do all this work and come to find out, you can't use the tracks.
Yeah, so I have a letter from the entity that is in control of the tracks that says exactly what I've just summarized for you, that if we have a use that's permissible, that requires the use of the tracks, that we're allowed to use the tracks.
We'll definitely take the letter.
And there's a federal preemption issue also, as it relates to the type of use you make of the tracks. Again, it's not necessarily an issue that you need to concern yourselves with here tonight. Okay? So your building commissioner's super nice guy, we've had many conversations since his decision, before we put a lot of pen to paper and come up with a big design, we wanted to know as a threshold matter, is this the type of use that we could propose to the town of Kingston under its bylaw? Because there's another way to go, which is not the way that my client chooses to go. My, my client chooses to proceed under the bylaw because he feels that's the most transparent way to propose this use. It allows public input, it allows the planning board to put conditions on it. If the planning board really believes it's an adverse use, the planning board would even have the potential authority to deny the use. There's another process called site assignment, where we could apply to the D E P, we could go to the Board of Health, which would conduct hearings here and then determine whether this use is, is otherwise allowable. It's an alternate way to proceed. It's a long road to proceed that way, but it provides, in our view, less public input and doesn't get to the issue that we really want, and that was to know what people really think here in Kingston about this proposed use. So when I took the initial appeal, I disagreed with the building commissioner on really one initial basis. Although you have a prohibitive bylaw, the bylaw doesn't have to define every single term in order for that use to be permissible. And if you did that, things that have evolved in fifty years, a gas station doesn't look like it a gas station was fifty years ago. Gas station now usually includes a convenience store, things like that. Uses evolve. And you have some other very broad categories of uses that we believe this falls under. And in my initial appeal letter to you, I explained that we believe that a facility like this is engaged in what I say is processing of materials. We take in, in this particular case, trash and recyclables, we sort them, we package them, we clean them, we bundle them, and then we put them on a rail car. You have a bylaw provision under section five that specifically allows a building of the size that Mr. Walsh contemplates over an area that contemplates by special permit with the planning board. And it doesn't have to be manufacturing- with the planning board. Um, and it doesn't have to be manufacturing, processing, and something else. It could be manufacturing, processing, or something else. So, that was the initial basis that we took the appeal on. And, following discussions, uh, with the building commissioner, uh, and with the town, uh, it was also suggested to us that, uh, this also fits within the ambit of a public utility building or yards, contractors' offices and storage yards, provided the use is screened from a budding lots and exterior streets by its all landscape screen and a fence at least five feet, but not more than seven feet. Another use that's allowed by special permit from the planning board. And, um, we make that, uh, argument to you in the alternative, because we do believe that you have the authority to define those terms. Um, this is the board that has the authority to define those terms where they're undefined and not otherwise have a definition provided. And, this is a site that is particularly suited for that, because if you've been up to the site before, um, or you've been to the MBTA station and you look over to the site, this is a depressed area of the O'Donnell property, it's at the end of the tracks, it's not visible to any other property in the area, other than maybe from the MBTA station. And, we can meet all of those requirements, including have a screened buffer and, um, five-feet fence. We'd probably put something a lot higher than that. Um, and again, there's a whole host of issues that would come up before the planning board that we would need to demonstrate in order to be entitled to the special permit. We're gonna have to show that the use isn't gonna cause, uh, some type of adverse impact on the environment, isn't gonna have any adverse impact on the abutters, um, you know, wouldn't affect water quality or conservation, all the things that you would typically deal with in a special permit. And, all we're asking you to do is consider allowing us to get there. And, we would prefer not to go the other way. We'd prefer to be engaged with the town, we'd prefer to do our permitting with the town. Um, if this use is, uh, allowed to proceed and the planning board saw fit for us to give us a permit, um, it's very customary that there'd be a host-community agreement. Uh, and, uh, if, if, if you're not familiar with town government, I represent, uh, three communities as town council, one as special council. Um, trash is an issue today, it's gonna be a bigger issue tomorrow, and if you have another avenue to dispose of, um, rubbish and recyclables, which Kingston would have, you will literally be the community that's ahead of everybody else. Um, I see it on an annual basis, on behalf of Barfield and Norwell and Stonem where I'm regular town council. We can never appropriate enough money on an annual basis to pay the increases, because we have to haul the trash out of all of those communities, just as you do here in Kingston. We don't have any landfills anymore, and then it gets shipped down to Covanta, and they burn it there. Um, this is another way to dispose of this. It gets on a rail car and it goes to all parts of the country. Parts of the country where it costs a fraction of what it costs to have it burned only at Covanta, who's in charge of basically the trucking, the fees, and the burning prices. So, um, again, I agree with the building inspector, you do have a prohibitive bylaw. And if this was a use that didn't fall within either of those categories, I would be telling you that the building inspector is right and would probably have proceeded in a very different way. But, the, these categories are very broad, and I believe with a very straight face that you all could conclude that this is a processing facility. Um, I don't know how you conclude otherwise candidly, and I certainly believe, and as suggested to me by other people in town, that this is the type of public utility building, a yard, contractor's office, a storage yard, that, that meets those requirements. And, we're simply asking you to give us a chance to go to the planning board and, and make that pitch for that special permit. We're not asking you to, um, say that this, this use is even gonna be allowed by the town. We're asking for the opportunity to make that argument to the planning board, and that's it.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think we should bring in our town council, unless you want some time to process. How you doing?
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Carolyn Murray from KP Law, and we were brought in as, uh, special council to advise the town on this particular matter. You know, as was said at the outset, um, I know there was a little confusion in the way this was advertised and a special permit box was checked off. Um, but what the zoning board of appeals is actually being asked to do tonight is either uphold the building commissioner's determination or overturn that determination. And, your basis for that is whether or not you agree with his determination that the use has, has been described to you, whether or not it is a use that is prohibited under your bylaw, or whether it is a use that is otherwise allowed. Um, as you've already heard Attorney Galvin say, and as your own building commissioner has said, in his determination, Section 4.1A of your zoning bylaw is what we consider to be across the Commonwealth to be a prohibitive bylaw. It contains very generic language that says, you know, uses that are not allowed are deemed prohibited. And, nowhere in your bylaw will you find any mention of a waste disposal facility, or a waste transfer facility, anything of that nature. There's also, however, there have been some legislative changes since your bylaws were first adopted, and a couple of those things that, that have come into zoning have to deal with the Solid Waste Management Act that the legislature passed in 1987. And, basically, what that act says, and it was, a portion of it is incorporated into Chapter 48, Section 9, but there's language in 48, Section 9, which, as you know, is part of the zoning act, that says that a bylaw had to specifically prohibit a waste disposal or a waste transfer station as of a certain date and time in 1987. After 1987, you're not allowed to adopt a bylaw to prohibit this use. You are allowed, however, to, uh, require a special permit for the use, but then the statute also continues that we're not allowed to deny a special permit for that use. And, we can argue as to what the legislative intent was behind that, but reading some of the case law about it, um, trashes everyone's problem, you know, across the Commonwealth. And, there was a sense that communities had to do more to address their community's issues and not necessarily, um, place the burden, um, on other communities. So, all of that is a long way of saying, you do have a prohibitive bylaw in a very generic sense. But then you also have to look at, what does this language mean of Chapter 48, Section 9, that says that your bylaw has to specifically prohibit the use? I can't stand here today and tell you definitively that a court would say that your bylaw specifically prohibits the use. You're all very, more familiar with your zoning bylaws than I am. You look at the uses that are allowed, you look at the use table, we're very familiar with the Y's for a use allowed, or an N for prohibited use. You will not see this use specifically prohibited in your bylaw. So, there is the risk of, should they, should the applicant decide that they want to go through the site assignment process through Mass DEP and the Board of Health, that process could play out. Um, but for whatever reason, the applicant has chosen to try to work through the town and, and with the zoning bylaws. So, if you feel that you agree with the building inspector, that you have a prohibitive bylaw, then it's kind of an easy decision this evening to just reach the conclusion that you would vote to just uphold his determination. If you think that there might be some gray area here, and I think that's what Attorney Galvin is introducing to you, is that, number one, there's a question as to whether or not your bylaw does specifically prohibit this use as Chapter 48, 9 calls for. Then, there's the possibility of, are there other uses that might be similar in nature? Um, Attorney Galvin was explaining earlier that sometimes uses evolve. Um, I had a situation in another community where, um, a doggy daycare was a use that came in. Was not something that was expressly allowed in their bylaws. Wasn't exactly a kennel, wasn't exactly a veterinary clinic, you know, what was it? And, they had to really work their way through to decide, could a doggy daycare be something that qualifies and meets one of the definitions under their bylaw? And, that's really what you're being asked to do tonight. Um, going through the record of, of folks who have, um, offered opinions on this use, there's been some suggestion that a transportation terminal of sorts might be a definition that could fit. Um, just looking at the definition of an industrial park, perhaps that's something that could fit. Um, the manufacturing, processing, sorting category, maybe that's something that would apply. And then there was this final, uh, public utility contractor's yard suggestion that was made. Um, all of those are really before you to consider. Some of those terms are defined, some of them are not defined. Uh, where they're not defined, yes, I know you've received a, an opinion from an attorney for the abutters, saying you looked outside sources, or you looked to things like the, you know, common usage in dictionaries. Yes, that's a possible source. But, courts also will defer to members of the zoning board of appeals when it comes to interpreting and applying their own bylaw. You know it better than anyone else. And, you know what other uses have been allowed in town, and perhaps what use categories have applied to those other uses. So, there is gonna be a great deal of deference that is given to this board's decision. And, I'm happy, Mr. Chair, to answer any questions or help guide the discussion this evening, if you have any.
Only question, I, I have kind of two real quick ones. A, why can't they just apply directly to the planning board for the special permit? Why can't they just bypass us, since it's very, since you're keeping it so open and vague? Why does not, why skip over this process and not either get a denial from us, which could be the hammer to the nail, or just come back to us if, if they feel the planning board's not going their way? I, I don't understand why they're in front of us right now, asking us for, to determine vague language.
And, I can appreciate that, and, and far be it for me to try to get into the minds of the applicant or the strategy sessions that they've had. Um, I think that might be a, a question more for Attorney Galvin than for me. Um, but to answer your question, is there anything that stops them if they feel so strongly that they qualify as any of these uses from applying for a special permit to the planning board? And, the answer is technically no. There isn't any of that.
Why not go parallel at the same time?
Well, I think what has been a stumbling block is the building commissioner's determination that the use is not allowed. And, if I were a member of the planning board, and this application came before me for whichever category they, they wanted to argue fit and apply for the special permit, I think the first words out of my mouth would be, I don't understand why you're here before the planning board when our building commissioner has said, this is not a use allowed. So, I, I think it's a little bit of a catch-22 situation.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, which was kind of bringing my second question of my mind is, well, that was kind of the reason why I asked if they truly had ability to use the train tracks, because that would actually sway, like you said, if they're a trucking terminal, they can then argue that they never said they were gonna use the train here, even though it would be in minutes, but say, we, oh, we're gonna use as a, you know, truck in, truck out, until we get the approval of the train, which might change my overall thought of what they were first selling us. That's me. I, I can ask the board any questions they have, but that was kind of why I didn't want to make a, an instant knee-jerk reaction to upholding or denying, because I didn't know if it was, what I was being sold was true. Um, I mean, I keep saying, hearing, yes, everybody has the ability to use the tracks, but does that mean you can use them in 20 years? Does that mean you can use them by the time the facility comes online, or can you condition it, I guess you could say? So, you cannot use that building or your facility until then. In other words, I don't, I don't want to necessarily put a hurdle in there, but I don't want to give the, the, go, like you said, the green light from us, and then planning goes, well, zoning seemed okay with it, let's go that way. And then they said, well, we can't get the tracks until, you know, year 2030, and then I would, I would have been like, I never would have allowed this.
Right. And, and, and I think that's fair to have all of those questions. Um, but respectfully, I think those are questions that, whatever category of use, whether it's this board decides that they qualify as, or whether it's the applicant who just wants to make that argument on their own, that's all going to be evaluated by the planning board.
Right.
So, if we're concerned about traffic, and in, in this case, heavy trucks, and the number and volume of trucks that come into a neighborhood, um, versus most of the material coming in by rail, they're gonna have to...
It's definitely gonna be coming in, but then if you can't get it out, you have to get it out by trucks again.
Exactly. It's gotta come in, it's gotta go out, whichever way it's going, and maybe it's a mixture of the two. I, I don't know enough about the, the specific business model that they're, they're offering. Um, they're gonna have to prove that to, to the planning board's satisfaction, because obviously, traffic is, or, or even congestion in a neighborhood, or routes that would have to be taken by trucks. I would expect whether it's the planning board under a special permit, or if they go the site assignment route through DEP and the Board of Health, Board of Health's gonna look at those things as well.
No, and, and I understand, those are the people who get to do the billing bucks, but I would like to have the ability to put a hurdle in the way, if it's not the, what I, just me. I'm not necessarily saying I would, I'm just saying, if I don't feel that I'm being sold as, as, you know, the true goods, I would rather put a hurdle in the way and be like, good luck, you know, you made it past us, take your shot in the next, in the next round. So, that's my thinking. That's why I asked if they truly had it, you know, and they were selling that all together as a package. That's just me. I can, I can ask the board if they have any questions for you. Like, you know, Lane, if you have any questions?
Um, no, not right now.
Doug?
Yep.
Kevin?
It's just, yeah, yeah, I mean, you brought up some good points there, Paul, because that's what it, we were going about the train tracks and freight and everything all else is, you know, it is an industrial site, but it's, it's also a lot of traffic, one way in and one way out of there, and...
I'm not saying it's up for zone for it, this is a zone for it, but be a lot of trucks.
Thank you. Um, anything more?
That's it.
Bob?
I have no questions.
I have one question.
What's your head?
It's my understanding that they went to the building commissioner, and maybe I'm wrong, to get a permit to construct the building that would, they would use as part of their transfer operation. Is that correct?
I, I think the bill, I'll, I'll defer to the building commissioner on that one, but my understanding is, is that they, they actually went for a zoning determination as to, is this use, if we wanted to build this here, would you agree that this use is allowed? And, if the building commissioner had said yes, then I think the next step would have been for them to apply for a special permit, and that building permit would be a long way off. Because, at this point, even if we were to accept that it's a processing plant, it's a public utility, it's a transportation terminal, whatever use category, those all require special permits from the planning board anyway. So, had they gone to the building inspector for a building permit, they'd be denied until they come back with a special permit.
I guess you sort of answered my question. Maybe, David, you could clarify for me?
So, first things first, um, you know, as a, as the newly-appointed building commissioner here in Kingston, um, there's been a, a big learning curve for me. Uh, and as I understand the zoning bylaws and the permit process here in town, in order for the developer to have, to come in, request the permit, they would have, the first step is, they request, they have to get a zoning permit application filled out first. That would have been reviewed. Now, had this been done, um, in a, in a manner that the developer had just walked into my office, dropped off this application, put it on my desk, I would have had and taken the time to execute, research the, the application, request the, the definitions, the, as it would have applied to the black and white that I see in the books on the bylaws. I think, in all honesty, as a, as a new building commissioner, I would have upheld what I, what I found in this case, I would have denied the permit, because as it's defined under a trash transfer station, it is not explicitly denied. Now, without legal counsel to guide me, and without understanding the Trash Transfer Act of 1987, uh, that I, you know, would, had I done enough research in this, would that have potentially changed my mind, and would I have, you know, defined this trash transfer station as a public use or as another building, had I known about, had I studied the law or understood the law a little bit more in person? Uh, you know, I, I don't know. I, I think at this point, I think what the benefit of the zoning board is, is it's a collective mind that allows us to make arguments on both sides of the aisle, and, you know, super-majority rules as far as whether or not the decision is made. Now, as far as to your specific question about if this passes here and it goes in front of the... if this passes here and it goes in front of the, the planning board, the planning board is going to have the power to impose whatever restrictions, parameters, guidelines, anything like that. So as I understand it, in our bylaws for a public utility building, there will need to be screening that's put up around the entire property.
I don't want to interrupt you, I understand. I guess for me, just to clarify, I think you did a great job. It makes a difference for me. Why we're, we're here, why you are, why there's an appeal to this board of a decision that you made? And I'm trying to drill down, what was the decision that you made? It sounds like you made an advisory zoning ruling.
No, so we don't have it defined in our zoning-
I know, but he didn't deny the permit, they didn't come in and say-
Yeah, he did, that's what we're upholding his denial.
You denied the zoning permit.
No, the use.
And you would have, okay. So they are here appealing your denial of a zoning permit in, in your capacity as the building commissioner.
Zoning use.
Period, end of sentence.
So-
I just, because it makes a difference to me.
The initial permit, the initial permit was denied, the zoning permit was denied based on what was presented in our bylaws in black and white. There was no clear definition of a trash transfer station in there. So as that stands under section 4.1, it was not defined clearly. It was denied based on 4.1, no definition in the bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Attorney Galvin, you want to rebuttal on anything? Before our town council goes down real quick, no, not you Dave, before our town council goes down, is this just a majority vote, not a super majority vote on this?
No, it would require four out of five of you.
Just wanted to make sure. I, you said it, so I wanted to make sure. That, that's fine. I'm going to get to a lot more than just the people online. I think the confusion that keeps happening is that he denied your permit for a use. You guys, I don't know if you want that denial or want us to uphold as if you're changing your, your, you're not saying, you're not saying that it's prohibited, you're saying that it's actually something over here in a grayer area that's kind of of a vague determination as a-
All right, well, let me, I'll try to make it really succinct, okay? We never filed for a building permit. All we asked is, is this a permissible use? And the buildings commissioner said at the time, under what he knew at the time, no, it's not a permissible use. And that's the only thing we're appealing to you all, okay? You know, I think Attorney Murray makes a point there that I've made in my written submissions. Chapter 48, section 9, which is a portion of the zoning act, makes it explicitly clear that if you don't have a bylaw that says that specific use is not allowed, you can't rely on the passive language of a bylaw that says if the use isn't specifically authorized, it's not permitted. And I think that's a really important point for what we're saying here today, this type of a use. Unless it says transfer stations are not allowed, isn't prohibited by your bylaw. And it gets even worse beyond that. But that's a key part of the argument that I'm making tonight. I don't think that's a factor that your building commissioner was aware of at the time, he made his decision. So I think that's just another reason why we should be able to make this filing with the, with the planning board. I heard you kind of take into account the trucking and all of those things. That is kind of beyond the scope of your authority, that will be within the scope of the planning board's-
I know, I know to have a scope of our authority, but you are actually in front of us with a hurdle, is my point.
Right, but if you use that hurdle against us because you're concerned about traffic, then you're not paying attention to the issue that you really have to focus on. And that is, is the use itself a use that's allowed by the bylaw the way the bylaw and state law are interpreted? And what I'm trying to suggest to you is try not to consider it because if you do, I get to use that again in another form and that's not a productive use.
Right, and I get that, but I, I think you're using the vagueness of the, of the law that you're using, you still have to be somewhat definitive of what you're trying to sell us.
I, I've never been ambiguous at all.
No, I know you haven't, I know, but I'm just saying-
And I want to make it crystal clear, what's attractive about this site is the rail. We don't want to bring trash in, sort it and truck it out of here.
Right.
We want to bring trash in and recyclables in, process it, package it, and put it on a rail line. That's the only reason this site is important to us. And it's an industrial area, it happens to be, you don't have to drive through a residential neighborhood to get there. We're not oblivious to the fact that there are other businesses in the area and that we will have to be sensitive to any impacts on all of them. I, I'm sure there'll be some limitations on truck traffic or any myriad of types of things that you would have to deal with. But that's why it's important to us, we're not worried about truck, trucking out of there. We're trucking in there and putting on a railcar and sending it across the United States to where it's, you know, economically more beneficial for everyone to, to bring it to. We proceeded this way because we thought it was important that Kingston get to decide whether this is a use that you want, because we could have proceeded a different way.
Why didn't you just go directly to the planning board?
Because we wanted to know whether, before we spent a lot of money, and by the way, when we filed, we didn't even have a plan of the proposed facility. We had to generate one because your rules required us to generate a plan. So we have a concept plan now, we were only interested in the use. If we had an adverse decision on the use, then my client has another decision to make. Do we proceed to design? If we get a favorable opinion from you all, we're going to design in full and complete detail. It'll be peer reviewed, there'll be public hearings, we'll talk about all those other issues. We're going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on plans. All we really wanted to do was find out whether Kingston viewed its bylaw as being permissive either by special permit or otherwise for this type of a use. So we didn't spend the money until after we were told that if we don't even show you a concept plan, we couldn't even proceed to this appeal. So, again, we feel this is the most transparent way to come for a process instead of trying to do the end around the town, going to DEP and then trying to go to the Board of Health. We think actually going before your land use boards is the appropriate way to do it. Because you're the ones that are, you and the planning board are the ones that are used to making these types of calls with a whole bunch of uses and would rather actually take it head on and start, and, and not be evasive.
Here we go. I've just, like I said, since we don't have a definition of what you're asking for-
Right, but that's, 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 that's to our advantage.
Right, but I'm also wondering, that's why I'm just trying to make it sure before we say we deny with the building inspector, that we know that you're saying we want a transfer station that is truck in, trail out, that's it. We don't want any, we don't want to change that, those three options.
Yeah.
Or recycling slash whatever, but-
Your, your building commissioner is doing a terrific job. And this is not an easy call, this is one of the toughest ones he'll probably see in his entire term when he's here. So this isn't personal for us with him and he's been extremely communicative with us before and since, so.
Anybody while he's up there from our board want to ask any questions?
Any idea how many trucks would be coming in and out of there a day? 500, 1,000?
First of all, if we're limited in a size facility that's, you know, 5,000 or 10,000 square feet because the planning board put a condition on us, I guarantee you it'll be a de minimis amount. But, you know, there's a lot of, in the historical earth removal down there and there's current reclamation down there. My guess is that you'll see significantly different and potentially less. But again, you have a, the, the town will gain in this because not only will there be a reduction in, in, we believe, a long-term reduction in the cost of getting rid of your trash, but you'll be the community also that actually stands to gain from that via host community agreement in which the town is going to, would automatically receive a share of, of, of the, of the tonnage that goes through there.
Very good, anyone else?
The law that you're referencing in 1987 for a transfer station, is that just for towns or is that for region?
Cities and towns, statewide, chapter 48, section 9.
But it's not regional, which you're proposing?
It's statewide, it applies to every city and town in Massachusetts.
For that individual town or that individual city? Not for, hey, we're going to take it for all of the South Shore?
It's a general proposition that says that no city or town that doesn't have a bylaw that doesn't specifically prohibit it at that date can say that the general prohibition is an actual prohibition. If your bylaw didn't say on, I forget the date, 1987, that this use was specifically prohibited. I'm not talking about a blanket statement that says any use that's not allowed is deemed prohibited. The language of the bylaw has to be affirmative in its language saying that use is not allowed. If you didn't have that then, what they're saying is you can't make that so today.
I'm just confused on the size, that's all. I, I understand every town needs waste removal, dump now called a transfer station, but-
Yeah, well, I mean, again, we were, there were three categories, 20,000 and like 40,000 square feet of lot area, then there was like 60 and then there was like 80. We were, you know, contemplating that it could be as much as the larger one, okay? But again, I can't tell you how much, how much, how much volume of traffic is going to be there until we design the facility and can tell you what it capacity is.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Lane, Bob, Marshall?
No.
Very good, anyone from?
Yep, I have Ben Timmons.
Where? Mr. Timmons, go ahead.
Thank you very much, I think my camera is about to come on, thanks.
There you go.
Good evening, members of the board. My name's Ben Timmons, I was at your meeting a couple of weeks ago. I represent two local landowners, John Sullivan and Christine Alcondro, Carnal, both of whom are at the meeting this evening. And appreciate the opportunity to speak, I'm here with my colleague Patrick Gerby as well, who's on Zoom. We submitted a letter yesterday that I believe was distributed that focused on our view that the type of use that the applicant had articulated two weeks ago as being the use that they think they might be eligible for public utilities actually is not, is not a fit. But I'd rather, I'd rather tonight focus on just sort of summarizing some of the, some of the points that have already been made, which I think, I, I agree with much of what Attorneys Galvin and Town Council, Attorney Murray has said about the procedural choices in front of you. But I think just distilling it down to its essence, you have a situation where the applicant submitted a zoning determination request or a zoning permit request as it's referred to under section 10.1 of your bylaws. And that required the building commissioner to undertake an evaluation of whether or not citing to section 4.1 of the bylaws that any use of a building structure or land not specifically permitted by this bylaw is prohibited, which was discussed earlier by Town Council Murray. The building inspector had to determine, okay, is this particular proposed use, the waste transfer use, quote, specifically permitted by the bylaw? In other words, is it eligible for approval under the bylaw? And then he undertook an analysis looking at the categories that might be the closest in type to this. And he determined after, you know, I think a pretty careful review and he's, he's, he seems like a very, a very, you know, humble person who's, I don't think, I don't think giving himself enough credit in terms of the analysis that he did. He made that analysis and I think he correctly determined that none of the use categories specifically permit this use. And I don't believe that the applicant, you know, made the case to him that, that it did fit within one of those categories. And I don't think that they've really made the case to you, the reviewing board, that it fits. So your role respectfully as the ZBA is to review the decision of the building commissioner. And if you feel strongly that he was wrong, then you would vote to reject and overturn his, his decision. But I agree with Attorney Galvin that this was, you know, a tough decision by the building inspector. It's something that, you know, is not easy and that took a great deal of analysis and he did that. And I think he's right, I mean, I, I, I don't think that there's been any showing that this particular proposal fits within a specifically permitted use that would even make it eligible for a special permit in front of the planning board. So I believe that, you know, that you should take all that into account. And, and if you, unless you believe that clearly the building inspector was wrong in his analysis, then I would urge you to vote to uphold his decision that this project is not eligible for zoning approval under your bylaws. Thank you very much, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, anyone have any questions for him while he's still there? Very good, thank you. Anyone from the audience want to speak? Anyway, no? Anybody else?
Yeah, I would. I'm John Sullivan.
Come on over. Just do your name and address, please.
My business?
No, or whatever.
Yeah, John Sullivan, Five Gallon Road, Seven Gallon Road, Nine Gallon Road, Seven Gallon Road? No, Three Gallon Road, I'm sorry. Kingston, Mass. We've been down here about 38 years now. And I'm very concerned about this. And not just for my businesses, for the abutting neighborhoods. Talking about smell, noise, all those things, that's one thing. But to listen to somebody say that the truckloads going through, you know, the one road in, one road out, that's, that's me. It's going to go right through me every day, every morning, every afternoon, every night. And to, with all due respect, to have this gentleman say that it's going to be de minimis is ridiculous. It's going to cause cacophony. And it's going to impact my business, it's going to impact the entire area down there. And it's not just, I'm not, I know, you know, you think it's just about me talking about my business, I'm not doing that. There are a lot of beautiful neighborhoods around there that are going to get impacted by this. Taxes might be saved, land values are going to go down. And I just don't understand why would, why we would want to take on this type of situation. I, I've studied it. You know, I've done a lot of reading on it to make sure I'm educated on what I'm talking about, I'm not an expert on it. But it is not great for us, for a community, for town. And I urge the board, if it ends up on the ZBA or the planning board, which is another situation, just turn it down. There has to be some type of better use for that land than what is being proposed. And that's, that's what I wanted to say. But to say that it's going to be a de minimis, in other words, we're going to have less trucks going up the street. Because right now we have plenty for sand and gravel and the rest. It, it, I can't even imagine what the traffic is going to be going up that road, noise, smell. I think you guys can do the rest. But I had to put my two cents in there, guys, thanks for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public or? All right, Mr. Powell, go ahead.
Hi, Jimmy Powell, 93 Elm Street. I'm trying to get the camera turned on, but it's not going to go, maybe? So I kept hearing the applicant's lawyer talk about how they're, they're really trying to do this to get the most public input. Would it not make sense to try to get, like amend the zoning bylaw in a town meeting? It seems like you'd get more public input doing that than you would here. That's just my immediate thought, thank you.
Thank you. That was brought up before, but I don't know. That was brought up before, but I don't know. Do you have anything, any wanting to speak to something about that or no? Talking to Mr. Galvin. Should've just got you a mic. Would've been easier. We have a mic.
So.
I'm gonna ask both.
You, you wouldn't be able to amend your bylaw to prohibit this use now? Wouldn't be allowed. It would be inconsistent with forty-eight, section nine?
No, but I guess so. Mike, I guess his question was, wouldn't you wanna go in front of the town and ask to be permitted to the way you want it?
My experience for thirty years as the town council, that the best way to get the feeling of a whole town is to do it with a ballot question, because town meeting typically involves significantly less than five percent of the population of the voters, and it's not representative of what most people think. It represents the opinion of what the active voters that go to town meeting think. So I, again, is that the way town, zoning bylaws are amended? Yes.
I'm just saying, I wouldn't know if that would be speedier for your case.
I don't think it would be in.
Can I follow up?
Yeah, one second. Yeah, one second. Go ahead. Mr. Galvin, are you done?
Yes, I am.
Wait, while, while you're up there.
Yeah. I'm glad you didn't let me sit down first.
Do we have a mic back there for him? Yeah, I know we do have a mic.
I'm just, I'm confused on the use that you're proposing, because when we look at uses, we're looking at, let's say, residential, which would be three cars, traffic wouldn't be impacted. People are talking about trucks here, and then you're talking about just rail systems. So when we're looking at the use, we do have to consider that stuff. I mean, a commercial building would, you know, if you are building a new, you know, apparel store, the traffic in and out, that's a part of the use that the bylaw contemplates.
In your capacity as special permit granting authority, I agree with you. But in your capacity that you are here tonight, all you're looking for is a definition. It's a complete legal question.
A definition of what, though? Transfer station or sorting facility or?
Well, your bylaw uses the word processing facility, okay?
What are you asking for?
Well, I've, I've told you, I felt it was a processing facility, because we bring trash and recyclables in. We clean them, sort them, package them, and put them on a rail. I think that's a processing facility, and that's, my initial appeal letter had said that. It was suggested to us that we also consider this as a public utility contractor storage yard, so I made that pitch in the alternative. And then, thirdly, I explained to you, and Attorney Murray also explained to you, that unless the use is specifically prohibited by a bylaw, not just because the bylaw's language is prohibitive, that, that's not a sufficient way to say that use doesn't, is not allowed.
But what Town Council is saying is that it, it has to do, the prohibit, the prohibition has to do with trash.
No, it has to say a transfer station is specifically a prohibited use.
But you're not asking, you said a processing facility.
Well, that's what a trans, that's what you do at a transfer station. You take the trash in, you unload it, you sort it, clean it, package it, and put it on a rail, and it goes out. That's what happens in the facility that we're proposing. Marshfield had a transfer station. Most towns have a transfer station, because there's no more landfills. In that case, it's trucked out, but Kingston has this rail line that's accessible to us as a business.
Well, we have a transfer station.
I, I understand, but you're bringing that waste to Covanta, and they're charging you X number of dollars a ton. This is a and, and by the way, that's not, know what will happen in a few years when your latest contract comes out. This is an alternative way to dispose of trash and recyclables. I mean, L. knife and son, they, they take their recyclables, they process them at their facility. In addition to selling their, their beer, they package the recyclables up and they put them on a rail bed and they, they ship them out. This is a different type of a transfer facility. It includes recyclables like that, but it also includes some trash.
Okay.
Anyone else? No, hold on. Someone wanted rebuttal. Where'd he go?
Oh, hi, yes, so anyway, he mentioned that putting it on a ballot question would get more people, but like, how many people are in the room right now? How many people are on the Zoom right now? Like, that's, like, the town meeting vote would still be more people than this. Like, it's, it's, if you wanna put it on a ballot question too, sure, like, that, that also works.
Correct. Anything else? Mr. Powell?
No, thank you.
Ms. DeBois?
Hi, how are you? I'm sorry I haven't been on the entire meeting, but, but from what I understand, I think the, the town has spoken about this site, and, and when we passed, you know, the ten twenty-one Kingston Place and were talking about housing and mixed-use development up there, it was a very robust, as I recall, kind of idea, where you would put people that were traveling by train into Boston, not necessarily trying to create an industrial use by putting, you know, truck-deposited materials onto a train and then creating an industrial service from a train that is a residential train. I mean, just the train itself was supposed to become a, a electric train before, before now, certainly. You know, so I, I think that there has been plenty of evidence in Kingston that we would like to see residential development and commercial development in that area that would, that would be reflective of what we're doing in the town, not try to put an industrial use on the highest, steepest rail slope in Massachusetts. I don't understand where the trash is gonna go. It, to me, I, I mean, I'm not opposed to the idea of what is being proposed. I just don't think we're the best site for it. I think Mansfield and, and Middleborough might be a better site for that kind of stuff. I don't, I don't get the whole thing, and that's why I am apologizing for not having been more engaged in, in discussions here. But I definitely support what the, what the building inspector did, and, and I agree with what, what Jimmy has been saying, is that it needs more public input for, for, for this to, to change what the town has already reflected is in its interest to do.
Thank you. Anyone else from the?
I'd like to just start off with this, a statement that as the zoning enforcement officer here in the town of Kingston, it's my job to be as impartial as I absolutely can be when I receive a zoning application and review it up against the zoning bylaws. And I have a black and white set of bylaws that I have to apply, what a project is requesting for me. Now, I can tell you in my six months here as an appointed commissioner and zoning enforcement officer that the old joke that everybody may or may not be familiar with, what's black and white and red all over, it's, for me, it's no longer a newspaper. It is the bylaws. And I do believe that from everything that I've studied and learned, going all the way back in history of our, of all the towns' bylaws that I have in my office, they haven't changed much, and I think that there is a lot of gray area in the bylaws as far as interpretations of them and such. And this is why I think that we're here tonight, is because under four point, under the use guidelines under section five, there is no explicit definition of this use. So therefore, I had to rely on four point one. Now, I would also like to add that as, as the building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer, I am not a resident of Kingston, so I don't, I don't have any skin in the game, but I'm, as a resident of another town, and seeing what we here in Kingston have right now with our public utilities, with the water moratorium currently in effect, my thought and my job as the, the building commissioner and zoning enforcement officer is I have to look ahead to guys. And I, I believe that the board is gonna agree with me on this, that once that water moratorium ends and we start seeing some of these other developers wanting to come into town, are our bylaws up to date and, and prepared for all of these, these new potential projects to come in? And more importantly, do we have the resources, the public utilities, that are going to be needed to support these additional projects? So again, without any skin in the game, I'm, I had to apply this as, as impartially as I can, on a black and white. It was not defined, it was not there. That's the point of this board's meeting tonight, is to determine whether or not it meets the developers' requests and requirement. The next steps, if they pass here, it goes in front of a planning board, and there's gonna be a lot more scrutiny, a lot more information that's gonna be provided to the town residents, to the boards, to the officials that, that, that help govern this town. So that's all I'd like to add additionally. Any questions?
Yeah, so there was mention that you didn't know of the nineteen eighty-seven reference in forty-eight A, or, yeah, in the state, in the Commonwealth's code.
Correct, yeah.
Does that change your opinion today?
It's, I'll say it again.
Does that change your opinion today, knowing that law, that, that?
So again, this is where those gray areas take into effect. Had I been presented this at the time that we were kind of making this decision, knowing that it would have been, the language would have been prohibited, I, I, I don't know. I, I think from my standpoint, you know, one of the questions that I asked originally early on was whether or not the developer has the rights to use the rails. And, you know, do I wanna be the guy that makes that sole decision based on something that's a little bit gray area here? And say one of those trains breaks down and rode to its final destination and causes a backup of, or a lack of use of the train stations at that point, it makes everybody late. I think that's, I think this is where the, the board comes into play, in terms of the decision. I think if, in all honesty, if I had all of the information in front of me, the, the Transfer Station Act and everything like that, I think, in my mind, I think I would have approved it, in the sense that it would have, it would have been under the guidelines of the law. And I think I would have had a different opinion on, on the approval, but...
So why can't you go back and approve it?
Why would I do?
Why can't you go back and approve it? If you think that you would approve it now, based on all of the information?
Well, again, I, I, I just, I relate, resort back to the, to the gray area, you know, we've, we've, I've been at the, many of these meetings where, from a residential standpoint, I have a black and white code bylaw book that says if you're, if you wanna build a, an addition on the back of your house and you can't meet the minimum setbacks, I have to deny you. You have to come in front of the board and make the, make the appeal to the board. But when you're talking about a setback being met, and you have a setback of fifteen feet, and a residence project is proposed at fourteen foot eleven, that's a gray area right there, but by the book, it's black and white. So I have no other choice, but I have to say, you're at fourteen foot eleven, you don't meet the bylaw fifteen feet. I'm sorry, I have to deny you. Then you, I become, you know, I have to enforce it. At that point, the, the case comes here to the, to the board, and you guys have the ability to.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you didn't have all of the information before you, when you denied it? And now you have more information, and what you're saying is that you would have, going back, you would have allowed it with that, if you had had that information?
But that's, that's the point I'm making. Even if I had the law at the time, the law simply states that we cannot prohibit a transfer station under that law without that, with, with or without it, without it being explicitly
Yeah.
prohibited from our use in the bylaws. So even if I had the law in front of me, if I had council's directions, and they said, well, hey, you've got this, you, you have to approve it under a definition in the bylaw, could I have been the one to define it as a public utility, or as the developer and Attorney Galvin have, have assessed it as a processing plant? In my mind, you know, a public utility building, as I explained it in the last meeting, is, is a, you know, water, trash sewer. And it, it does have some gray area that it could include a trash transfer station or a trash processing facility.
Okay.
So again, I, I don't, I, I think that from a black and white standpoint and the usage code, I denied it at the time. I honestly, I can't save the fact whether or not I would have changed my mind if I had the eighty-seven transfer station law in front of me. I, I don't know, because it still would have, how do I meet the definition of the transfer station in the bylaw? That's black and white. That's what I would have had to go by.
Okay, thank you.
Doug, anybody else, anybody's up there?
Eric Crone is on.
Mr. Crone, go ahead, please.
Thank you for your time. Eric Crone, forty-three Longwood Circle, also the chair of the Board of Selectment. I'm not speaking for the board, I'm just speaking for myself. I mentioned this last time, but we did have conversations with these guys about, you know, longer term, you know, what this could look like for the town, and I just wanna give you guys a little bit of information. Again, I'm not an attorney, I'm not the expert on ZBA like you guys. I just wanna give you some information. So you know that our budget for this coming year, it was incredibly tight. We had to make a lot of cuts to, so that we wouldn't need an override. We are actually using up our taxable levy. There's gonna be three thousand dollars left at the end of the year. So we're actually closing our transfer station Monday nights. It's not gonna be open on the evenings, and that saves twenty thousand dollars in overtime. You know, so we, we, money is tight. As was mentioned earlier, our contracts to take our trash and process our trash are going to go up. We have very decent rates right now. They're gonna go up. You know, I, I think we still have a couple of years before that happens. But, you know, one of the things we were talking to these guys about is potentially being able to eliminate our transfer station. And this would be negotiated during the, the host community agreement. They, they had mentioned possibly curbside pickup across our town, without cost to our residents. So there would be no cost, you'd have curbside pickup. They could provide the, the functions of our transfer station, if we wanted to go that route. I'm not saying that we do. We need to analyze that. But that's something that, that could potentially save both our, our residents, taxpayers, as, as well as the town itself, because we've got these concerns going on long term. So again, that's, that's really it. I mean, based on the fact that they could be providing curbside pickup and processing our trash, and that, and again, I am not an attorney, and that's why we, we pay these great attorneys to work for us. But in my mind, that, that sort of defines what one avenue of a, of a public utility could be. So that, that's it for me. I just wanted to give you that information.
Thank you.
Yep.
Bob?
Please. Christine Alicandro Carnal, fifty-five Forest Street, five Kingston Collection Way, three Kingston Collections Way, thirty-two Main Street. There might be others in there. The point is, we're here tonight strictly to approve or overturn. We can talk about what the potentials may be, what it could do, doesn't matter. We're here tonight for one reason. Let's please not lose sight of what we're here for.
Very good. Thank you. Town council, wanna finish with anything? You're good. Very good. I do wanna ask you a quick question. Are we allowed to pool the board, or do we have to go direct to vote? And do I have to close any of this?
If, if you wanna start deliberating, yes, you have to close the public here, but you could get a sense of the board members.
So I'm allowed, I'm allowed to pool to basically stay, I'm asking the pool to keep flat, not, not putting, kinda helping out both sides. I can close it, and we can go right into it, deliberate. But I'm allowed to pool.
You're allowed to ask the board members if anyone expressed their.
And that's what I wanted to ask. Does anybody have anything last they wanna say before I close it?
I just kinda reiterate the fact, she kinda stole my thunder. I appreciate the topics brought up on the numerous items. And they could be discussed and dissected for, against, for. I also think there are a lot of questions, gray areas, between bylaws, transportation use, environment, traffic, quality of life of the town. But the question we are here for tonight is a simple, do we uphold the zoning enforcement officer's ruling or not? And I think all the other topics were brought up were huge, but not what we're here for tonight.
Very good. Anyone have a motion?
Make a motion, close it here.
Can I go second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Any discussion? Anything special? I mean, my feeling is to uphold our zoning enforcement, because that's who we have for a reason. I don't think he did this out of whim.
No.
Sounds like he did some work.
I, I vote to uphold. I, I vote to uphold the zoning enforcement officer's ruling.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good.
I'm voting no.
Uh, that's fine, so we'll have a four to one on the sending.
Okay.
Thank you. Minutes, do we have minutes?
Oh, wait.
Uh, you have decisions I have to sign. What do we have in two weeks?
Pushman.
Did they push them tonight?
No, they were on the eighteen, and they just bought the pair of you last week.
Did they, did they sign a new waiver extending them out?
They're extending it until July sixteenth.
But by the time we get.
I sent an email to Tanya.
We're still on, do you wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Not yet, because I wanna, I wanna, I wanna kinda go over this pushman thing, because I wanna make sure that they're.
They're gonna be here.
They're wa, well, they either be here, or if something goes awry, I wanna make sure they have a waiver that has a cushion. Currently, they'll have a month cushion on their waiver.
I just sent them an email, and they're usually pretty responsive.
All right. Very good.
Because I think they're supposed to be here as well.
I, I don't know anymore, we pushed them so many times, that's kinda why my brain's getting frazzled. Um, that's it, that's all I got. Anybody else do anything, quick?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Who made a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.